Having trouble here with the agenda. So we get into the meat of it, which is item six, the pay policy and legislation update. And this is in the name of Carolyn, although I suspect Carolyn, you'll hand over to Jack on this. [S02] Yes, thank you, Chairman. Jack will lead on this one.
Thanks, everyone. So you'll have read the paper, which provides an update on the National Pay Award and the proposed employment-related legislation changes. The committee is asked to note the current position in relation to the pay award and developments concerning employment legislation, and to agree the delegation to the chief executive in respect of departmental management team members. So if I cover the pay award first, which is paragraph six, essentially the paper notes that the national employer's final offer of 2.75% has now been formally agreed, and it's being applied in line with the HCC collective agreement to all grades A to G, and is also being applied to all grades H and above. The new rates of pay will be actioned in November's salaries, and will be backdated to April 2020. In terms of the paragraphs seven to 11 reflect the item around the confirmation of the chief executive's delegation. So we're seeking to clarify arrangements already expressed through the constitution, and which refer to the to chief officers as being members of the corporate management team and the director of public health. The constitution also refers to deputy chief officers, by which it means senior officers of the county council who report to chief officers in respect of all or most of their duties. So in other words, we're describing departmental management team members. In recent times, the practice of setting the remuneration rates for those DMT appointments has been for EHCC, so this committee to delegate authority to the chief executive in consultation with the chairman of the of EHCC. This practice also allows the chief exec to vary the remuneration of DMT members from time to time, as appropriate, and again, in consultation with yourself as chairman of EHCC, councillor Reed. Such remuneration is set in line with established rates of pay for those posts, and as agreed and described in the annual pay statement. Since a number of our DMT members have been appointed some considerable time ago, it's been it's not been possible to find consistent delegations in respect of the determination of all DMT members remuneration, including some of our DMT members who've got considerable experience that they've accrued in the posts. In order to enable the chief executive to review remuneration levels in line with our appropriate governments, their committee is being asked to formally delegate to the chief executive in consultation with the chairman of EHCC, the authority to determine the remuneration of current and future DMT members from time to time in line with established pay rates for those roles. And the remainder of the paper covers more broad updates around public sector exit payments, and then briefly touches on a number of other updates regarding consultations. So I'll start with the public sector exit payments restrictions, so specifically the restrictions of public sector exit payment regulations 2020. So this is the 95k payment cap, and paragraphs 13 to 23 refer specifically. So you'll recall that a period of consultation on the restriction of public sector exit payments closed in July 2019, and that the government has now announced that they plan to implement that 95p exit payment cap, indeed have implemented, and it came into effect on the 4th of November. Key provisions of that regulation state that any payments made to an employee by way of their exit will be capped at 95k, so 95,000 pounds. Paragraph 14 reflects all payments that are encompassed within that exit payment regulations. It's important specifically to know, as referenced in the paper, that the pension strain charge, so that's the cost paid by the employer if an employee is made redundant aged between 55 and their normal pensionable age, and it ensures that the employer suffers no actual reduction in their benefits accrued to the date of redundancy. So the pension strain charge must be included and is included in the definition of an exit payment. So and these costs, the reason that we're pulling it out in the paper so explicitly is because these costs can in certain circumstances be considerable in and of themselves. Payments exempt from the 95k cap are those made in respect of death in service, payments in respect of incapacity as a result of injury, accident, or illness, pay in lieu of contractual annual leave, and payment in compliance with an order of the court or an employment tribunal. The regulation does allow for two waivers. The first relates to payments made in relation to whistleblowing, discrimination, or other similar cases that might be considered by an employment tribunal. The second is a discretionary waiver that must comply with one of the following categories: so undue hardship, where the workforce reform would be inhibited, and where delays in an exit beyond the implementation date of the of the regulations have been outside of an employer's control. So COVID might be an example of that. In relation to those discretionary waivers, they must they have to be approved by full council, and also then by MHCLG, and separately by Majesty's Treasury on the submission of a business case. Paragraph 22 highlights the fact that further clarification is still awaited in relation to the new regulations, particularly in due to the fact that there's a conflict between the regulations in themselves and the existing local government pension scheme regulations. The paper then goes on in paragraph 20, paragraphs 24 to 32, to describe the redundancies payment redundancies payments. So in addition to the 95k cap, the government consulted on a number of reforms to redundancy payments. And this is and these have been previously reported to EHCC. MHCLG have now published, sorry, my notes have just gone blank, NH, EHCC, MHCLG, apologies, have now published free fresh consultation on how that framework should apply to local government, and the consultation closed on the 9th of November, and we have responded to that consultation. The framework intends to limit local government redundancy payments, as well as pension strain costs for early retirement under the local pension local government pension scheme. The new consultation is seeking views on qualities and workforce impacts of the specific intended reforms which are set out in your paper at paragraph 25. Our current understanding is that these wider reforms, unlike the 95k cap, only apply to redundancy situations and are not applied to other exits, for example, exits on the ground of on the grounds of efficiency. That said, we need to wait for the consultation to be concluded and the detailed guidance to be published in order to clarify that. In addition, the ongoing consultation sets out a number of further reforms for exits where access to pension would be granted in the case of redundancy or efficiency. Those are listed in paragraph 27. Of keynote is that the proposal to limit the number of weeks of redundancy pay that can be paid to an individual to up to three weeks per year of service, which will have an impact on the council's EVR scheme, since that scheme currently offers payment equivalent to 20 weeks pay for a permanent employee with at least two years' service. If the three weeks pay per year of service is implemented, it would mean that employees with less than seven years' service would receive to reduce voluntary severance payment, as shown in paragraphs 29 of your table. The key point that we wish to make here is that clearly this will have an impact on our EVR2 scheme, and making it less attractive to some staff members who have less than seven years' service. At that said, an amended scheme in accordance with the legislation would still be valuable tool for the council to effect transformation through voluntary means, especially for staff for some staff whom it will enable them to exit on enhanced terms. Paragraphs 33 to 37 of your paper then cover repayment of exit payments. So we're still awaiting further government response on this consultation, following the publication of draft regulations in 2016. The draft regulations require the individual to notify their new and previous employer where they proposed to return to the public sector, having after having received a public sector exit payment within the previous 12 months. It then requires that the old employer should make arrangements with the individual with the individual in order to recover that exit payment. Other matters covered in the paper are seen from paragraph 39 through to 51, and I'll just briefly recap those for you. So we've got no further updates in relation to the government's intention to legislate neonatal leave. Several consultations, which are listed in paragraph 40, are currently being considered. However, we don't have any further update for the committee at this time, other than in relation to the ethnicity pay reporting, where this is we know that this is now due to be debated in Parliament, following a petition for its introduction, which gathered more than 100,000 signatures. A new consultation closed on the 9th of September in relation to supporting domestic abuse victims in the workplace. And we've set out for you in paragraph 42 just a range of things that we already do to support employees in such circumstances. But obviously, we await further information in relation to that specific consultation. We responded to consultation which closed on the 5th of October in relation to national insurance and contribution holidays for veterans, and again, await a response to that consultation. There are two consultations calling for views on proposals to rectify age discrimination in the public sector pension schemes, as identified through the McLeod case, whereby the courts found that protection arrangements put in place directly discriminated against younger pension scheme members. One of the consultations covers a range of schemes, whilst one specifically covers the local pension, the local government pension scheme. And the proposals vary between the two consultations. Proposed changes are anticipated to come into effect from April 2022, and a proposed framework of those changes has been published. But the consult and the consultation specific to the local government pension scheme closed on the 8th of October. So we're really just waiting for further information to see whether the proposed framework and then the update following consultation is considerable and what the impact would be. Finally, and very briefly, we just wanted to update you on the shortage occupation list. So you'll recall, we've had a number of conversations around the impact of EU exit on our staff, and specifically in relation to changes to the immigration policy for the United Kingdom. And you'll recall that the we talked about the Home Secretary having commissioned the Migration Advisory Committee to review the occupations list, to consider whether that there were any additional shortage occupations to be added to that list. That is roles which are considered hard to fill. So occupations included on the list have special dispensation in relation to immigration rules, which we've previously discussed. We have responded to that consultation in considerable detail, and we're pleased to note that the Migration Advisory Committee have since reported that senior care workers will be added to that list, which is one of the many factors that we did raise as part of that consultation. I think that probably is the end of my kind of overview of the paper, but obviously happy to answer any questions, et cetera, as necessary. [S01] Thank you, Jack. I'll go through these subject by
subject. We're going to the recommendations, members, that we note the current position on the pay award, and that we agree the delegation to the chief executive in respect of departmental management team members, as set out in paragraph nine. So the first item was the pay award. Are there any questions, members, on the pay award and its implementation?
If I could just ask, can we be given a figure for what the implications are of that on the County Council's budget? Just a global figure? Do we have that easily to hand?
Councillor Perry, I'm afraid I don't. What I can say to you is, we had accounted for a pay award of up to 3%. Therefore, we had sufficient funding within our contingency budget. But offhand, I'm afraid I can't give you that figure. [S03] Thank you. I mean, I'm quite happy if it could be
sent it at some future date. No, we're sure we had the money there, but I just wanted to get a feel for what what the cost of that was going to be in round terms. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's just see if anybody else. I see no further hands. Thank you, Councillor Perry. Confirmation of the chief executive delegation. This is basically a little bit of tidying up, because the current delegations are not as complete as we want them to be. Any points here? Councillor House?
Yeah, just one minor, a quirky one, really, because it's sort of indirectly related, and no respect to anyone involved. But what are the arrangements for chief executive?
John, can you answer that one?
I'm not sure it's for me to answer, Chairman, but the I think it's it's simply around inflation. So the salary, I think, remains the probably now the only one that's on a spot, and and it stays there. So it's just it's just inflation based. The director of resources might be better placed to answer that. [S04] That is correct. The salary has remained unchanged, other than inflation,
certainly, in the 10 years that I've been at Hampshire County Council.
Thank you. [S05] And Adrian?
It was just a missing it was just a missing sentence, really, in terms of tidying up what was there. That was all. [S04] Understood. Thank you.
Adrian?
Thank you, Chairman. I think that probably answers my question. But I've got no problem with the delegation. It makes sense to do that. But we have our salary structures that have been worked out on the value of jobs and so on, and rightly so. And we want to pay people to get good people, you know, to do the work and so on. Have we at any point ever paid these senior officers at a different rate to the rest of the staff, a different rate of increase? Because if we do from time to time do that, there's obviously the risk of salary drift. I don't think we have. And I think Carolyn just said that in the last 10 years, we haven't done that. But it's just to reassure myself. Thank you. [S08] Chairman, in the last 10 years, obviously, there were some years whereby
there were nil pay awards allocated. There was one year where the corporate management team received a nil pay award, but the staff received an inflationary award. So the drift point that you've raised has happened, but in the opposite way to that, which I think you might have been requesting an answer to. So the drift has been for the higher pay to come down, and the rest of the organisation to continue in line with. I use the term inflation loosely. It was a capped sum dictated by government, which didn't align with inflation, but it was an increase.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. That's helpful.
Okay, good. So that's the confirmation of the chief executive delegations. The exit payments, any points that people would wish to make on the exit payments? Okay. Going through. The thing that concerned me on the exit payments is that doing it in terms of a The, the thing that concerned me on the exit payments is that doing it in terms of a, I, I'm concerned about the voluntary redundancy scheme. My recollection of the voluntary redundancy scheme is that we always make a business case if there is to be a redundancy. And it's the business case, I think, that is important here rather than the absolute figures. And to drive it on absolute figures, I, troubles me a little. I've got Steve. Steve Philpott.
Yes, thank you, chairman. I think I've got the right part of the report because there's quite a number of aspects to the whole report this morning. I don't know what the collective noun is for, for consultations. I imagine, I'm going to use a word blizzard. There's obviously a blizzard of consultations. The one that, that appears to be pertaining to this ended, if I'm right, on the 9th of November. Is that correct? And I wonder if the officers can tell me, is, are they aware of any representations and what the outcome of those representations, if there were any, to extend the, the period of consultation? Because I understand there were representations made to MHCLG to extend. And also whether they know of any legal challenges? Because I understand that certain organisations such as Unison, for example, were considering legal challenges to some of these, some of these proposals.
Chairman, would you like me to pick that one up? Councillor Philpott, there's two aspects to that. The consultation that closed on the 9th of November is the one that's going to change the exit payments around the 20 weeks and the EVR. Certainly, I'm not aware of any change that was proposed to the close of that consultation. And at the moment, I'm not aware of any legal challenges having been brought because of course it's still in consultation. Where the legal challenges are coming forward is the section prior to that, dealing with the conflict between the 95k cap and the local government pension scheme regulations. So you're correct, the unions and the Scheme Advisory Board and various pension fund administering authorities are all seeking legal advice as regards that conflict. And I can confirm that Hampshire County Council as an administering authority is involved in seeking legal advice with the access pool. So 11 of us are contributing to seeking QC advice as to the appropriate actions that we can take in order to continue to make payments to individuals who breach the 95k cap. Because at the moment, it is not clear what action we should be taking. And we do expect that there will be legal challenge. It's simply a matter of time around the 95k cap and the local government pension scheme. I hope that's helpful, but happy to take any supplementaries.
Steve, has that answered your question?
Yes, chairman. Thank you. It does. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith?
Yes, thank you. And this is one of those many cases where the government has left local government in total limbo because it simply has not produced the right guidance in a way which is, which is actually capable of being administered. I think perhaps the collective noun for consultations is an obfuscation of consultations. And that's certainly how this, this, this set applies. Because we're in an absolutely impossible situation now. I think what's helpful for us is we have recorded this here because it is right that everyone, everyone is aware publicly that we're in this muddle because of a situation that's not a virus making. And a lot of this was, was clearly originally politically driven in terms of manifesto, manifesto requirements and the like from quite a long time ago now. And results in distortions in activity. I mean, I imagine there were a number of people who left Hampshire County Council just a little bit earlier than they would have done because they wanted to get, they wanted to get out the door before the end of October as a result of these, as a result of the 95k pay cap. But, but we are where we are. So the key thing is, is for pause, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I don't think anyone can really comment on that last point other than note the, the view that you've put forward. Okay. Then move on to other employment legislation updates and consultation updates and new consultations. Anything here, members? Right. And consultation and equality. And that brings us to the end of the report. So we're invited to note the current position on pay award and developments concerning the employment legislation. Are we content to do that, members? I think I will take silence as consent. And agree, agree the delegation to the chief executive in respect of the DMT members as set out in paragraphs, in paragraph nine. That's the decision that we're making.
Agreed.
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 And thank you Carolyn and Jack for that paper.
Thank you very much.
Sorry?
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll move on to the next one. And I'm flipping between items on the agenda here. So teams, so we've got the county council pay statement financial year 21, 22. And the point I always make in council is this is where we take last year's pay statement and update the figures. Is it Barbara going to speak to this one?
It is indeed, chairman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah. Yes, as councillor Reid has mentioned, members, that this is, I think it's the, probably the eighth pay statement that the council's done. Just to remind members, under the provisions of the Localism Act introduced in 2011, the county council is required each year prior to the end of the financial year to approve a pay statement for the following year. Approval of a pay statement is a function of the county council, but the responsible committee to recommend the pay statement, in effect, the conduit to full council is the EHCC committee. A pay statement is required to set out its policies in respect of the remuneration of its chief officers, who are defined in the Act of Statutory and NonStatutory Chief Officers, the monitoring officer and deputy chief officers, whatever their local job titles, in effect, as Jack has said earlier, the DMTs. And the relationship of the remuneration of those chief officers to the lowest paid employees and the county council, those members of staff on grade A. A pay statement is also required to set out the county council's approach in respect to the remuneration of chief officers on leaving the county council. And statutory guidance also issued under the Act advises that this latter should also include its policies towards the reemployment of the same. Members, attached to Tannex to the report is a proposed statement, pay statement for the year 2021, 22. As in previous years, the pay statement goes further than the strict statutory requirement and includes the county council's policies in respect of the remuneration of all its officers. Section one of the statement sets out, as in previous years, details of remuneration for non-chief officers, whatever their grade. And section two of the, of the draft statement sets out the remuneration of chief officers as defined by the legislation. So in that way, the statement follows the format of previous years. Just two points, as reflected in the report. The figures in the pay statement reflect the 2021 pay settlement. If there is a pay settlement for, for next year, then the figures in the pay statement will be updated accordingly. And in addition, as is discussed in the last item, if the effects of the latest government consultation on redundancy is implemented by legislation, that will impact on the county council's EVR scheme. And if required, the, the pay statement will also be updated to change, to reflect any changes to the EVR scheme. There's just two recommendations in the report. One for the county council to recommend the draft pay statement to the full council. And as in previous years, to delegate authority to the chief executive to make any changes to the draft required as a consequence of any changes in legislation or statutory guidance which might arise prior to the pay statement being considered by the full council.
Thank you, Barbara. The only debate that I recall over the last few years on this has been Keith's suggestion that we might include things like the gender equality gaps and things like that in this statement rather than keep them separate. On balance, we've kept them separate and it's tended to go through council without comment. Do members have anything they'd wish to say on, on this today? Keith?
Oh, Stephen, I'm desperately impressed that you remembered that previous conversation. Really am. But I, my thought was really to try and tidy the thing up by having one report. But I understand the logic that's, that's been applied here. And as you say, the reality, this has just become a routine, routine item now that we're, that's here because the bureaucracy of government says we have to report it in this way. So quite content.
Okay. So Marie, did you get that for the minutes? Desperately impressed.
With a capital D and a capital I. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Are there any, anything else, members? Right. Adrian?
Yes, it was just a point in paragraph 10 of the report where it refers to lowest paid employees and reasons for adopting the definition and so on. And it just occurred to me when reading through the report that if someone is aware that they are the lowest paid employee in a very large organisation, that that could have motivational impacts. And I wonder if that's an issue that we have to handle in any way or just one of those things?
No, I don't know who to turn to on this one. I think I'll turn to Jack, actually.
Yeah, that's fine. I was just going to say, so I think it's, it's a feature of the language that we're required to use in relation to the, the act and the bureaucracy that people have, have talked about. So we would, as an organisation, I don't think I've ever heard us refer to, to the organ, to people in the organisation in that way. We do refer to our, our grades from time to time. So our grading system which starts at A and obviously rises through to K. But, and we, we do have conversations about things like the national living wage and those kind of conversations. But we, I have, I have never heard us describe our employees in terms of, in terms of kind of the lowest paid and the highest paid. And in, and in fact, the other thing I'd, so I completely agree with what you've described there. You know, if, if we were an organisation that described our people in that way, I'm sure it would have a negative impact on motivation. I think the other thing that we often hear people describe is how it is that the people in some of our lowest grades are providing in, in many ways, some of the very meaningful and directly, you know, impact from a service user perspective, services. So, so in some ways, the value of those employees is spoken about before any reference to their grade or their, their income or salary. So I don't, I don't know that it specifically answers your question, but that would be my observation.
I think you have answered it as well as is possible to answer it. It's probably just an unfortunate impact of the way we're required to record these things. But thank you. That's reassuring.
Chief Executive would like to come in.
I, I, thank you, chairman. I do think it's an interesting question. I think it's an inevitable outcome of what's inevitably a hierarchical pay structure. There's going to be somebody at the top and somebody at the bottom. And we have to tread very, very carefully, particularly for the point that Jack has made. At the risk of straying into too technical ground for my own brain though, I think something to bear in mind from that paragraph is it refers to grade A as the denominator for how we calculate the relative pay structures, which is what we're required to do. But actually, I think I'm right in saying that for an organisation that directly employs about 12,000 people, the proportion of staff actually in grade A is very, very low indeed now. And most of those, I think, are school-based staff. So the, the decision about the pay grade is taken by the, the school governors. Because we've taken the view that actually most of our roles calculate into grade B now. So I, I just make that point because I think it doesn't get away from your, your, your core concern, Adrian. But I think it's an important point to reference in the context of the living wage conversations and our recognition as far as we can about the, the required roles and responsibilities even at the so-called lower grades. We've got very, very few people in grade A now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think the, the major point that was made is that this terminology is in this report and stays in this report and doesn't come outside it. Okay, John, was your hand still up or you wanted to come in? Ah, it's gone down. Okay. Any other points here? Did I, did I see Steve waving at me? No? Okay. Okay, so what we're invited to do is to recommend this report as an appendix A to the full council for adoption. Is that your wish?
Agreed. Agreed.
And that we delegate authority to the chief executive to make, in consultation with me, to make any changes that might be forced on us by events between now and then. Is, is that acceptable?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. So I'm back to the agenda and I think we might actually now be done. I'm just trying to get to the footmarks. So the pay statement was item seven. Right, I think we're done, aren't we, members?
We are.
Yeah, well then, that's quite a short meeting for EHCC. I'm sure the officers will be delighted that they can get back. We had a, but it's a useful one nevertheless. So can I thank everyone for attending and keep well?